Board of Adjustment Meeting. Housekeeping Items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are Speaker Request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak and hand it to the Secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we ask that any member of the audience that has a cellphone or other protect- electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway and see that the meeting is not disrupted. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 23, 2015 zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting.
So moved.
Steve made the motion and Karen seconded the motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item two.
Madam Chair, we are requesting that item number two be continued to your July 24th, September 24th. I guess I want it still to be summer. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting. Before the meeting this morning, the applicants did visit with Fletcher and they've indicated that they will be submitting a revised site plan that would revise the request before you. And there are some neighbors that came in from western Wyoming to the meeting and that will give them an opportunity to speak as well so that we can bring a different site plan for you to review on the 24th. With that, our recommendation is to continue to September 24th.
The motion's made by Steve and seconded by Jan to continue to September 24th. Item number two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Are there any other items?
Move to adjourn.
Motions were made to adjourn meeting by Jan and seconded by Karen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We will now continue with the Rapid City Planning Commission Meeting. Items one through five have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to City Council. The City Council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item two, 15 UR 018. Item three, 15 UR 020. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Planning Commission- or Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through five that staff would like removed?
Yes, items two and five.
Are there any items planning commissioners would like removed? Are there any items an audience member, and I have a request for item number two, so... The Chair would entertain a motion now to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve with exceptions items number two and five.
Steve made the motion and Jan seconded the motion to approve items one through five, the exception of two and five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number two.
Madam Chair, staff is recommending that item two be continued to your September 24th Planning Commission Meeting. The notification letter actually stated that the meeting was being held yesterday and not today. That was a staff error. And so, in order to meet that notification requirement so that everyone who has an opportunity to speak, we are requesting that this be continued for two weeks. The applicant has been made aware of that and as such are not here today to speak to the item. So, we do recommend that you take all testimony at your meeting on the 24th.
Karen's made the motion to continue. Dennis seconded the motion to continue to September 24th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number five.
You had indicated that you had a speaker request card for number two.
Oh, yes. Excuse me. Sandra, would you please speak if you desire? Okay. Sorry. Item number five.
Madam Chair, our recommendation is that this item also be continued to your September 24th meeting for the same reason.
Steve made the motion and Eric seconded the motion to move item number five to the September 24th meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We will now go to the regular-
Madam Chair, I need to have you reconsider your last motion. I'm looking at an agenda that has 15 RZ 015 as item five. And that should be item number four.
Okay.
So, if you could just amend your motion that you are continuing item number four-
Steve, would you amend your motion?
-to September 24th?
That would be my motion.
Would you agree?
Yeah.
And Eric, agree. Item number four will be moved to September 24th if those agree. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Regular consent items? Yes, Karen?
Item is it that we just?
Because we have had the consent calendar with all the items except two and five, yeah, two and five, and now we've changed that to four, I'd like to reopen item number five.
Okay.
If that's possible, I'm not sure the legal way to do that, but...
I think we should take a vote on item number five.
Thank you.
I now entertain a motion on item number five. Karen?
I'm not ready to make a motion on it yet, but I have a couple of questions if that's all right. I'll ask this of staff and I'm not sure... Oh, Sarah, thank you. I have two questions, Sarah. In the agreement that was put together, there was a listing of the sewer and the water lines that had to be completed and it shows that those have been completed and that's the oversizing that they're asking for in that oversizing agreement. What about the road? Do they have that five-lane road and is that part of the oversizing? And does that still need to be done before the annexation takes place?
I would... I might refer that question to Carla or if there's someone from Public Works here who's more familiar with the agreement.
I'm taking a look at the agreement, just a second. Under the oversized agreement, it looks like the developer agrees to construct Fifth Street as a five-lane arterial. I'm not sure if that's been done or not, but I think pursuant to the terms of the agreement that would need to be done before they were paid. But without more of a chance to look at it, I didn't draft the agreement and I'm not completely sure and I don't want to be held to what I'm saying right now. But I believe that that's the plan for the oversized agreement, that they'll construct the improvements, annex, do it in phases, and then be paid according to the annexation. So, that's part of the application today or part of the reason, I think, for the application today.
Okay. So, we can go ahead with the annexation even if they have not completed that road?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was one question that I had. The second question has to do with the legal description and maybe that, I don't know if that's yours or Carla's also. Because these, the legally- legal description is in meets and bounds, but if you go online or if you look at what else they talk about, they have those condominium things. If this is annexed by meets and bounds, does that still make that condominium description legal? And if so, why don't they use that as their legal description?
Well, that's a complicated question. This property, instead of being platted, has been condoed and so the legal description for the condos extends far past what they're actually annexing. And so, the compromise was that, and they proposed this actually, they had a meets and bounds drawn up to annex only part of the legal description. And that's why they needed the meets and bounds. And our office has looked at this, as has the planning staff, and this complies with state law. I mean, generally, annexations occur by lot or block or tract or what have you, but meets and bounds is completely appropriate and it is especially appropriate in this case where they don't want to annex the entire legal description, they just want to annex a portion of it.
Okay. So, the legal description for that portion plus the road and stuff, they still couldn't use that condominium description for that section that they're annexing and then add the roads as, you know, a legal description for the roads? But they've chosen to do the other way and just do the whole thing as meets and bounds? That's what you're saying?
Yes, and we agree with that. I mean, it's the city's, it's been the city's position that these are not platted lots that are, that they've chosen to do the condominium project as a way to not plat. And we don't wish to kind of recognize that method of doing it by calling out the Southgate Condos lots that they, the way that they've described it. We prefer to use the meets and bounds.
Okay. That's, that was kind of my background too is how, how do we do that and do we, in the future, request that they plat if they're doing anything construction or they just can go ahead and build whatever they want to on the land that's now in the city limits?
That matter is being considered-
Okay.
...and litigated.
Okay. That's good. That's all I need is to know. So, as far as annexing it, is legal to do it this way? And I'm glad they're annexing in the city. I don't want to discourage them from doing that, so...
Exactly.
I will make a motion to go ahead and approve item number five.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There isn't a site plan. Is this letting ground go through the stoplight at Fifth and Catron? Is that what we're talking about? Oh, there we are. That's what I thought it was. To, just to the west of that area of meets and bounds, is there not a pond, kind of a lowland lake?
There's not.
I know it's not part of it, but it's adjacent to it.
Yeah, it looks like it.
I guess my question, I hadn't thought about this till Karen asked her question. We did a tiff in that area, did we not? And I guess probably I don't have that information here. Had a concern about whether that presented any kind of hazard because that thing dries up, gets wet, it's kind of a swampy pond. It's not part of the annexation. It isn't going to cause any trouble for the city if we annex adjacent to that with regard to the road that we're building through there? And if that land is not owned by the person petitioning for annexation, are we going to have some setback issues? Just a moment.
That land is owned by the person who's petitioning, or it's all owned by the same landowner.
So, the lake, pond, marsh, whatever it is, is owned by the same person petitioning for an annexation?
Yes.
So, they should be able to figure out the five-lane road? Yes. I'll look at the engineer.
Yes.
I guess in answer to your question, this annexation does take in the proposed right-of-way for the five-lane section based on those lines, I believe. I don't have the exact dimensions, but I believe that's the intent include that the city's worked quite a bit with the developer-owner to secure that right-of-way area and that's secured in an easement now. It's not right-of-way yet, but that five-lane corridor is secured in an easement. Contains some of the utilities. The pond should not affect that. It's more of a stock pond. Drainage goes through there. They've had some master planning and I believe that'll be not eliminated but reduced and managed through a drainage channel, drainage way. It does go under the street to the north and continues through the overflow from that. So, I guess as far as we can tell at this point, does not seem to be a concern with that pond being that close.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen? Karen?
Thank you. I have one more question for Sarah. Normally, we have a petition for annexation. Is that something that is still going to go through before it gets to City Council or it's not on our screen here, so I just wanted to-
Yes, there was a petition submitted with the application.
No, it isn't.
Yes, the, there was a petition submitted with the application that we have in the file. It wasn't linked to the agenda, but it does meet the state law requirements to be signed by 75 percent of the owners of the property and the registered voters.
So, there is a petition for annexation and it'll just go forward to City Council?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen made the motion to accept item number five. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number six.
Item number s- item number six is a conditional use permit to allow a cellular communication Take you through some slides. Property's located east of Mount Rushmore Road, south of St. Patrick's Street. It's the location of the First Baptist Church of Rapid City. Aerial view of the property. The applicant is proposing cell tower in the southwest corner behind an existing shed. And then, this is the Walgreens on Mount Rushmore Road. The tower is approximately 85 feet high, 75 feet a tower and then a 10-foot lightning rod on top. Future land use shows it as urban neighborhood and revitalization corridor on St. Patrick's Street and Mount Rushmore Road. Mount Rushmore Road and St. Patrick's Street are also identified as arterial streets on the city's major street plan. And the property is currently zoned general commercial district and the cell tower is a conditional use in that district. Here we have the site plan showing the proposed location of the tower and equipment shelter. The tower is designed for co-location and a second shelter has been identified which would come in in the future when someone decides to co-locate on the tower. Close-up of that. There is sufficient parking on the property for the church and the cell tower use. They're proposing to put some additional trees along this west property line. Elevation showing what the fence will look like around the tower and shelter. Not your typical chain link with barbed wire. Elevation of the tower and the shelter and showing future co-location. The applicant has indicated that the need for the tower isn't for coverage but is for wireless network capacity, that the fact that we've got a lot of data being used on cellphones, et cetera, they need the capacity for that use. Elevation of the equipment shelter, it's a concrete, solid concrete and aggregate surface. Here we have a picture of the property looking southwest from St. Patrick's Street. Sign is posted on the property. This is looking from inside of the property on the northwest corner, looking out towards Mount Rushmore Road and the intersection with St. Patrick's Street. And that's the Walgreens parking lot on the other side of the grass. Looking east on St. Patrick's Street, there are single-family homes on the north side of St. Patrick's Street. Looking north on Seventh Street, which is on the east side of the property. This is looking from the north side of the property into the interior. Here we have the existing shed and the cell tower will be in this area. Again, looking at the property in the backside of the Walgreens where the drive-through is. And looking at the location from the east side of the property across the parking lot. There are some commercial offices located on the south side of the property. And then, looking south on Seventh Street. And then, to the east is a funeral home and four-plex on the northeast corner over here. We have not received any calls in support or in opposition of the proposed tower. Staff is recommending that the conditional use permit be approved with the stipulation noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
John? John made the motion to approve. Dennis seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Item number seven.
Item number seven, 15 PD-1, this one was continued from our last Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to construct the drainage improvements. Get you to some of the, this is the house that was constructed, the easement that was vacated, but the drainage improvements weren't constructed. This is taken a look, I believe this was Tuesday. They hadn't really started any work on the backside, but they had done the, as Cale with Spurlock Consulting had indicated, they were going to do more V-shaped swale between the houses. This is from yesterday. They'd actually pulled up the sidewalk, put in curb and the conveyance for the drainage. And you can see the pipe there that they're getting prepared to put in. However, it hadn't been fully constructed as of yet. That's where it's going to tie in. They have put the drainage pipe into the backyard. There you can see where they dug up and replaced the grass. And then, the inlet in the neighbor's backyard which should convey the drainage to the street. However, since those improvements have not been constructed and city staff hasn't been able to inspect them yet, make sure they're working or that they're going to work, staff recommends that the item be continued to the September 24th meeting.
Steve made the motion to continue and Karen made the motion to second. We have a speaker request form. Sherry, would you like to speak?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Sherry Dieterly, 3754 Padre Drive. I guess the main thing I wanted to say, I guess, today if we're going to continue, that's fine, but I just feel that, you know, I first received the letter regarding this issue June 4th, you know, it's been three months now. I feel that this should have been taken care of by now. I do appreciate everything everyone's been doing for us to help our family, but I just wish we could get it taken care of, so... But otherwise, I'll maybe speak again at the next meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number eight.
Item number eight is a vacation, portions of section line highways located east of Elkville Road and south of East Minnesota Street. This item is on non-consent so that Commissioner Braun can abstain. I will show you some quick slides. A vicinity map and the section line highways being vacated are shown in darker shade. You will notice that the southern half of the section line in section 20 is not being vacated through the city's process. That's actually located out in the county and that must be vacated through the county commissioners. The applicant is working with the county for that application to go through with them. An aerial of the property. You may recall that recently you did approve a preliminary subdivision plan to create 43 residential lots in the eastern portion of the property and 17 commercial lots in the western portion of the property. And we had encouraged them at the time of reviewing those applications that they bring this request forward so that they could reduce the setback to that section line highway, which is 58 feet, creating bigger building envelopes on the adjacent lots. Current zoning of the property. Future land use plan shows that we're not identifying anything within the section line highways. The interior road networking that's being provided through the preliminary subdivision plans will provide access to the lots. Marlin Drive, that's the dashed green line shown through the development, that is being proposed as a part of the preliminary subdivision plans. We did get comments from two of the utility companies indicating that they are requesting that a portion of this area be retained as a utility easement. That's the exhibit that the applicant submitted to retain that back as a utility easement meets the utility company's requirements. And as such, we are recommending that this item be approved with the stipulation that prior to City Council approval, this utility easement be recorded.
Karen made the motion to approve and Steve seconded with the stipulation. And Eric is abstaining. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number nine.
Item number nine is 15 PD-028, a final plan development to allow a bed and breakfast in the Park Forest District. As you recall, several months ago, the Planning Commission approved an ordinance amendment to allow bed and breakfast as a conditional use in the Park Forest District. This is the application that we were hoping would come in as a part of that or that instigated that discussion. Let me take you through some slides. Aerial view of the property, as you can see, developed as a single-family residence located at the end of Covenant Drive. Should note that the portion of the Covenant Drive, which is adjacent to the property's home and the turnaround, is actually located within an access easement. It's not dedicated right-of-way. Zoning of the property, it's Park Forest District with general agriculture district as well as medium-density residential district. That's developed as part of the Sony Creek Highlands apartment complex. Future land use map, low-density neighborhood. Catron Boulevard is identified as principal arterial street. Hago Drive and Covenant Drive are not paved at this time. The applicant is asking, requesting one exception as a part of this plan, final plan development to not, or to waive the requirements to pave the first 50 feet of their driveway. Hago Drive and Covenant Drive, neither are paved. Would not make a lot of sense to have discontinuous pavement constructed as a part of this. Site plan showing the location of the house, the existing three-stall garage. You can see there's a large parking pad located in front of the garage where their customers will, or their clients will be part- will, or their clients will be parking. A look at the lower floor of the home where the bed and breakfast use will be located at. As you can see, they're proposing two suites with the common area divided in between. Each suite will have their own bath facilities. Look at the sign posted at the driveway of the property. Look at, this is the Covenant Drive as it approaches the house. As you can see, the location of the driveway in relationship to the end of the Covenant Drive right-of-way. I'll look back at Hago Drive and Katrin Boulevard, the intersection. Look at the nearest developments in the area. There's, that's the Copper Ridge Apartments going in across Katrin Boulevard, as well as some single-family residences located, that's Velagio, I believe. Look on the property, the existing driveway, a little close-up of the existing turnaround, and a little bit better shot of the parking area with their new 1940 Ford coupe in the As I mentioned, the applicant has requested to waive the requirement to pave the first 50 feet of the driveway, which makes sense given the state of Covenant Drive and Hago Drive. With that, staff is recommending that the application be approved with stipulations outlined in the staff report. The applicant is in the audience today to answer any questions, if you have any.
Motion was made by Steve and seconded by John to approve with stipulations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number 10.
Item number 10 is 15 PD-029. The applicant has emailed staff and requested that the item be continued to the September 24th Planning Commission meeting. That's staff's recommendation.
Steve made the motion to continue. John seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion passed, all opposed? Motion passed. Item number 11.
Thank you. Item number 11 is 15 PD-037, final plan development to revoke an existing, or request to revoke an existing final plan development. You'll recall, was I believe earlier this year, the applicant submitted a request for a final plan development to allow multiple on-sale liquor establishments located as part of the Destination Point Commercial Development located northwest of the intersection of Omaha and La Crosse. The application was approved, but the development, the anticipated development has not taken place. The applicant has some new plans in the works, and as such, would like to have the existing final plan development on the property revoked to allow the project to move forward without the requirement for a final plan development. As you can see, the property's zoned a general commercial district, in an area developed with a mix of general commercial district, with some residential located in the north. It's close to Rapid Creek, so you've got some flood hazard district located to the south and to the west as well. Future land use shows it as appropriate for mixed-use commercial, and it's in a revitalization corridor. Futures, or the major street plan shows this is the intersection of two principal arterial Just as a refresher, this is the development that was previously approved. You should be aware that the final plan development that was previously approved extends all the way to the north end of the property line and abuts the residential development located in the north. The revocation of this plan development would only be for this portion shown here in the vicinity map. So as you can see, it does not extend all the way to the property to the north. It's only about half of the properties that exist today. That's the, a plan development designation will be retained on the north portions of this lot in order to retain that buffer between the commercial developments proposed at the intersection from the residential development located north of the property. So the planning commission still will see a final plan development when plans for that development do come forward. Picture of the property with the sign posted, you can see some of that residential development to the north. Look up La Crosse Street to the north. A look at Omaha Street to the west. This is an existing curb cut, you should note as well. We don't have any final development plans come in for what the applicant is proposing to do here, although it should be noted that they do intend to take some access off of Omaha. And the Department of Transportation will be reviewing that. Another look at the property, looking to the west, Omaha to the west, and a look inside the property. The applicant should note that the previously approved on-sale liquor establishment uses on the property are also revoked as a part of the revocation of this final plan development. So if they are proposing an on-sale liquor use in the future, it will require another conditional use permit or final plan development to come forward. And also, now, upon the revocation of this final plan development, all future development must comply with the requirements of the Rapid City Municipal Code, the Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual, the specifications. With that, staff is recommending that the revocation of this final plan development be approved and available for comments at this time.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We answered one question. The conditional use on the alcohol is also revoked. Is there, on the remaining portion, was there a conditional use permit for alcohol?
No, the revocation for this final plan develop, for this particular final plan development includes all of the previously approved one with the on-sale liquors, which would include that upper boundary. And a portion of the designation, so that, or because there was a designation that was on the property previous to that, a portion of that will be vacated so that this property, as it's proposed, will not have any plan development designation, but the designations will still remain on the northern portion of the property. So, and as, yes, or the revocation of the on-sale is for the entire property.
So there is no conditional use even for the remaining portion under the plan development?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question has to do with the plan development designation itself. Is that something that the applicant put on there? Is that something that we had on there previously? That's the main question.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the area that they're asking to have the revocation applied to, for the most part, was zoned general commercial and has been zoned general commercial for years. And then a few years back, I believe, Karen, you did the review, they rezoned this northern portion to general commercial. And because we saw at that time that there should be a buffer between the commercial that would be appropriate along Omaha, and what potentially could come on this, the northern portion with the apartments to the north, we had them designate that out as a plan development. So that's been in place since that rezone a few years back.
Okay, so it just happened that we added the whole piece, and now we just think it's appropriate to take that bottom part off because it doesn't need a plan development designation on that part next to the street?
When they came in with their strip mall, which, just for clarification, it's our understanding the strip mall's not going to be constructed there. Whole new plan, we've heard's coming, that is a permitted use in general commercial. When they came in with that plan, they knew that they had to do a conditional use permit for the on-sale liquor. And because there was some consideration needed for some unique parking calculations, they proposed, hey, let's just extend the plan development boundary and include the whole parcel so that we can make a master plan and develop this thing as a campus in phases. What we're doing is we're just kind of going back to where we were originally.
Okay, that was my question. I wondered where that designation was before. Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the revocation as stated by staff.
Motion has been made by Steve and seconded by Jen to move to approve. Eric?
I just have to abstain from this on a relationship with the agent.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Any other items? I entertain a motion to adjourn. Dennis made the motion to adjourn, Eric seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I'm having too much fun.
Motion passed.